Good evening and welcome to the October 13, 2022, Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask you to stand with us as we engage in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And since my wife does not watch these meetings, I feel now's a good time to say that this is the 22nd anniversary of our first date, so good thing she'll never watch this.
22nd anniversary?
As far as first date, what did I say?
You said 22nd anniversary of your first date. That's good.
Really do care about what you think. Sorry for the roll call. I see the trustees Hamel, Ratan, Muzel, Ingram, Laura Smith Everett, and myself are present. I think trustee Joy Costin is not present. Is that correct?
Correct.
Didn't know she'd be here by. So there are six of us here this evening. Good evening again to each of you. Awards and recognition tonight, I will turn it over to Dr. Bound.
Absolutely. Well, I would like to introduce our student spotlight for the month. So Henry, if you'd like to come up, Henry Gamber. He and I had a nice conversation late last week or early this week. And anyway, so Henry, we're all yours.
Hi, well, my name's Henry Gamber. It's lovely to be here and I want to give a big thank you to Dr. Bound and the entire Board of Trustees for inviting me. It's an honor. So I want to talk a little bit about my journey as a student. It's definitely had its twists and turns, but I appreciate your time here. I grew up in the suburbs of St. Louis and as a student in high school, I was lucky enough to have the resources and time to get to participate in AP classes and ingratiate myself and the different extracurriculars that we were lucky to have at my high school. Then turning to after graduation, I initially had gone to UMKC for my undergraduate degree and definitely had a tough time picking a major. It's something I still struggle with here, trying to figure out what I want to do. And I'm glad that there's a lot of variety here for me to experiment with. But I eventually settled on communication studies while I was at UMKC and got to participate in their campus newspaper, Ru News, which was a lot of fun. And I found though that with a lot of college classes, I really had a tough time. I was always described as like one of the gifted kids in high school and I found that it didn't really translate into the college experience as much as I really expected it to. And that led to in 2021, due to a variety of pressures with COVID, obviously, different financial struggles and academic struggles, I took a full-time job at where I was working at at the time and put my education on pause. And that's when I started attending JCCC. And I'm really glad I did because I think it's been a great thing for me and great thing to continue pursuing an education. This year was really tough for me and my partner. In August, I had gotten meningitis and spent about five days in the hospital, but I am really glad that my education wasn't interrupted. I found that the low cost here really helped me just make the smooth transition back. And now things are just about back to normal and both my fiance and I are glad that I'm still able to pursue an education here. Currently, I'm the editor in chief of the campus newspaper here at the Campus Ledger and I'm extremely thankful for the efforts of the staff and faculty, especially Professor Susan Dawson O'Brien's work in reviving the paper. I'm thankful to our staff for tirelessly working to breathe life back into the Student Media Center after it's been on a year-long hiatus. And I'm thankful to my fiance for providing the never-ending support that she gives. We're excited to pursue a lot of bigger and harder news stories, so I hope you all are on your best behavior because we'll start covering you guys soon. But yeah, that is, we'll keep an eye out, but that is just about my story.
Well, Henry, thank you very much. Any questions for Henry?
No, I'll just say you probably have picked up on who you need to watch more closely than others.
I'm making notes.
Anyway, it's lovely to have you here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. For presenting in front of us and we're glad you're here. You know, those journeys just kind of take twists and turns throughout your life, so just keep pushing ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ratan.
Hello, I just had a question of what are your, what's your favorite two newspapers to read that you go to?
It is an interesting question. I always love bouncing back to the UMKC campus paper. They've definitely struggled plenty alongside me, I guess, going through the COVID years, but it's always good to see what they're working on and they're still managing to pursue those harder stories and the big stories at UMKC, even though they do, they have suffered different staff cuts. And I'm glad that there are schools that are still making sure to support these efforts. But I would say I also really like the pitch here in the Kansas City area. It's just fun and I think it really helps make the news and everything about it is just a lot more engaging.
It's an institution.
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for joining us tonight. When I came into the boardroom and you were already here, very prompt, I thought you might be a reporter, so you're already holding the credential, you know, physically you look like a reporter, so you're fitting the bill. But thank you for telling us about your journey. I'm just curious to know if you would name a few things that you felt have made you more successful here than when you gave it a go at UMKC?
I think the flexibility with a lot of professors, I think a lot of professors understand that students work alongside working at the newspaper here. I have another part-time job and they really make sure to work with you. And I think the low cost as well really eases up the financial pressure. I'm still able to make sure I get rent paid on time, make sure to pay all the different bills. And I think it really puts a lot of the ease off of it and making sure that there's not a growing debt looming overhead waiting till graduation. And I think the student life here, it's really been something special. I'd even say that it's a lot better than UMKC's. Sorry for anyone who super likes UMKC. I love it too, but I think the support for student life here is really something else.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing your story. Love having you here tonight.
Henry, I'm Lee Cross. I have the privilege of being chair of the board. I did go to UMKC and I never thought I'd go there. I had many friends from St. Louis, including one of my best friends is from Ladue, a gentleman from Ladue. I had a journalism professor at KU, however, that challenged us to start reading The New York Times, The Wall Street Journal, The Washington Post. And actually, when I worked in Washington, I started reading The Wall Street Journal. And it does have a conservative editorial page with smart people like Peggy Noonan and others, but the journalism is wonderful. And whether it's the Annenberg's or the people across the wide swath of political spectrum that they give to journalism, I'm so thankful because we know stuff because of them. And so I thank you for picking journalism. I had something else I wanted to say. I forget what, but thank you for being here.
Thank you all so much.
And then with continuing the awards and recognition, last month at their annual conference, the Kansas Association of Collegiate Registrars and Admissions Officers held their conference here on our campus. And in that meeting, as a surprise, they awarded their legacy award to Margie Shelley. So Margie, thank you so much. Her colleagues around the state know her and trust her and listen to her guidance and her experience, and so the legacy award is most appropriate. I'd like to, if I may, add one more, and that is to recognize our institutional research team. And so Natalie Allman Byers is here with us and her colleagues, Mark Gordon, who is our senior research and data analyst, Gina Brewer, who is our senior planning research analyst, Lawanda Hughes, who's a research coordinator, and Karen Kohler, our administrative and research assistant, were recognized by the Department of Education. We received, actually Natalie received an email, oh golly, the very end of September, and I'd like to read that to you. "The National Center for Education Statistics, part of the US Department of Education, would like to exist in its appreciation to your institution and especially your iPads." That's the national data set that we participate in. "Key holder, Natalie. As of today, three weeks prior to the close of the fall data collection, all of the required iPads survey for your institution have been entered, edited, and locked. Because iPads is a very large data collection involving a number of institutions, completing the surveys and locking them down early during the collection period is extremely helpful. Providing iPads data is a major undertaking and we want you to know that we truly appreciate the timely response. We hope that you will pass this along as words of gratitude to your key holder and team as they are typically charged with overseeing the successful data entry and completion of the mandatory iPads survey." I just thought you don't, we don't typically, institutions across the country don't typically receive unsolicited emails or notes of appreciation from the US Department of Education or any other federal entity. And so I just thought it was noteworthy for tonight to recognize the work that we all rely on of our institutional research team. And so Natalie, to you and your team, we say thank you very, very much. That concludes the awards and recognition.
We didn't pay them to write that? Pardon? We didn't pay them to write that?
I'm not that smart. Blowing.
Yes.
It was wonderful.
Okay, that takes us to our, thank you, Dr. Bound, for that report. That takes us to our open forum section for the next item on our agenda. And I believe I'm going to read this statement I always do. "The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, please, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board." I don't believe there's any speakers tonight. I will say that people can register online by 5:00 PM the day before.
That's correct.
The scheduled Board of Trustees meeting, speakers must provide their names, city of residence, name of any group they are representing, the topic of discussion, and a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation, as well as the email address and phone number of the speaker who will be using access to the Zoom meeting. The Zoom link and conference number will be listed on the JCCC Board Meetings page, and that's just so people know where they can address it, but the general public can have access to it, right? Registered speakers should be familiar with Zoom, please, and its functionality before logging on to the Board of Trustees meeting. Registered speakers should wait until called upon by the chair to speak, at which time they'll be recognized by the speaker and will be granted access to the board. I read that every time. I just think it's important to know so that when folks show up, they know how it's supposed to go. So are there any questions on that? That's good because we cover it every month. Next item on our agenda is Board Reports, and we'll start with the Student Senate Report by Daniel Gonzalez. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
You're very welcome.
Before I move on to Student Senate announcements, I'd like to make a quick announcement myself. As some of you know, I'm a part of the cybersecurity program here at JCCC. And October is Cybersecurity Month, so on behalf of the Cybersecurity Club here at JCCC, I'd like to give you guys three tips in order to stay cyber-safe online. Make sure to update all your devices, such as your TVs, phones, and computers. I know a lot of people don't think of TVs when they update it, but they're all so important. Use strong passwords that are long and unique and enable multi-factor authentication for your accounts to further secure them. Just, I would just like to make that announcement, just keep people aware of cybersecurity and that it's an ongoing issue. And moving on to Student Senate Reports. So student clubs and organizations, since my last board report, three new clubs have been approved. The JCCC Drum Circle, JCCC Japanese Club, and Called to Greatness have all been approved here at JCCC. And three funding requests were also approved. The Social Club Halloween Event was approved. Luna's Dia de los Muertos Event was approved and Bollywood Boulevard's Dance Event that is going to be happening in November has also been approved. Additionally, Chick or Treats for Kids is still going strong. We have 16 clubs in total that have signed up. And just to remind everyone again, that's going to be on Thursday, October 27, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM on ATCOM 155. That's all the announcements I have for you guys. Thank you for having me on behalf of Student Senate.
Thank you, Daniel. Any questions for Daniel?
Okay.
Trustee Smith Everett.
I was just going to say, I'm really glad you gave those tips. At first I thought you were going to announce it's Cybersecurity Week and you were going to hack into all of our iPads at once to show us your skills. I'm so glad you didn't. Thank you for representing all your hats, the Student Senate and the club that you're, the club, the major?
Yeah.
Okay, club?
The club.
Okay. Can you tell us about those three, the Japanese club seems self-explanatory, and what were the other two?
Drum Circle Club and Called to Greatness.
Fantastic. Can you tell us how, what the process is for getting a club approved?
So that can be done through Get Involved. A form can be filled out through the JCCC Get Involved website, and that should be in the Student Senate webpage and you can fill out a form there. It should be in the list of forms and club, people who are wanting to make a club can fill out that form and they'll reach out to my vice president, Maria.
And then you approve? Or?
And then we approve, then we deliberate on and approve if we deem it's, should be a club at JCCC.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Trustee Ingram.
Do all the applicants make a presentation?
For the Student Senate?
For the club?
Yeah, all applicants make a presentation.
I was thinking maybe that they did that too. I thought you were going to ask a little bit more about the club because I was kind of interested in the Called to Greatness. I mean, you said the Japanese club. What's the Called to Greatness?
Called to Greatness is a Christian faith club.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Those Christians are always getting together.
Have a habit of it.
Any other questions for, how was the Fall Festival today?
It went good. We had a lot of people tabling from Student Senate, so if you went through there, you must, you might have seen our Student Senate table.
I did. See, I couldn't stop. I apologize. Andrea, you and I walked through. Looked real nice.
Thank you.
It was fun?
It's good.
Any other questions for Daniel?
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on our agenda is from our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure what's going on with your little shrine there in front of your seat at the table, but I mostly like it. We are, we are now less than a month away from the general election and come early part of December, we'll have new leadership in the House, many new committee members. The rosters will look very different than they have for the past several years and we'll be working to educate many new faces that traveled to Topeka to serve in their newly elected roles. So we look forward to the outcome of November 8 and it kind of gives us a sense of where things are going as we proceed towards January, when the legislature returns to Topeka. Last month, I provided a late-breaking update on the Technical Education Authority proposed cuts in allied health programs. That issue caught the attention of several folks who've since engaged the Board of Regents. I know that a couple of associations have submitted letters raising concerns over those cuts, and I even received a call from a staff member at the Board of Regents because the CEO saw my report streaming online and wanted to make sure that I understood the issue. So if you thought no one ever watches these meetings, currently, the discussion on any cuts has been delayed and the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees is building a spreadsheet that outlines actual costs of program delivery. So there's going to be more to come on that issue and we will continue monitor how that issue proceeds. Workforce development, Johnson County is being well represented in that dialogue. There's a special committee that's meeting this fall. They had a meeting at the end of September and the Overland Park Chamber, as well as our own Alisa Waldman, participated in that special committee by delivering comments. The KACC T testimony for that hearing is attached to the report, towards the end of the report, and the committee is supposed to have another day of hearings, but that has not been scheduled yet. They have through the end of the year to get that done. So we'll wait and see what happens there, but it's good to have a seat at that table and be a part of the communication that is going on with regard to the work that we do, not only at the college, but in our area on workforce development. Continued vigilance on property valuation issues. I reported that a rumor is that settlement has either been reached or is in the works regarding the Walmart case. No one seems to be able to point to anything concrete yet, but we're continuing to try to dig deep on that to see just exactly what's going on. Coming out of that same conversation was the possible effort to codify a case law, which is known as PREB. That's the case that was best by versus the state of Kansas, and that has been used in nearly all of the appraisal appeals since that case was decided. And that was for the tax years 2006, 2007. I think the case was actually adjudicated in 2010 or 2011 timeframe. So lots to keep up with there. Clearly, we will continue to listen for any movement on that issue because it's so important, not only to us, but to all the local governing bodies that are around the state. Conversations with state officials continue to occur regarding the role that the college will play in training for the Panasonic operation. JCCC will continue to lead the efforts over here in this region. That was even mentioned in the testimony that Alisa provided to the Workforce Development Committee, so take a look at that. Again, there's $5 million for five years for that, for that training, once that, once we get going with the facility there. Soon, Kate Allen and I will be detailing our legislative breakfast and lunch series. Look for the same timeline that we've done in the past. And if you're new to the board this year or you haven't had the opportunity to participate in these events, I encourage you, when we get the information out, when Terry sends it out, or when that information comes out from the president's office, take a look at those dates that are offered and we love your participation. It's an opportunity to sit down with our Johnson County delegation, build on the relationships that we have, as well as forge new ones. They allow us to tell our story, which is so important in the advocacy process in Topeka. Mr. Chairman, I think that kind of captures most of what's going on right now. You've probably noticed an uptick in your television ads, mailers, and signs. I always love driving through Johnson County because I forget that medians and rites of way vote a lot in Johnson County, as evidenced by the signs that are placed all over. So I'd stop there and see if I can answer any questions.
Is Joe Biden running this fall?
I don't, I don't know.
I see his face a lot. I just thought maybe, any questions for Dick Carter? Dick, I don't think we have any questions. I think, I think you covered it. I think that was excellent job.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Faculty Association by Professor Brett Cooper.
Thank you, trustee Cross. Just to get in on what everybody else is participating in, my college route started with JCCC as a college now student. I spent my first two years of undergrad at UMKC, excuse me, UMKC, transferred to KU, graduated twice, and went back to UMKC for some further graduate courses before my son was born. And now I'm back here at JCCC and very happy about it. So, Mr. Cross, it looks like we've got more in common than perhaps we thought.
We have a lot in common, although one union leader recently said, you're not a union guy. And I said, please don't take that away from me. It's just a solution that I have.
All right. Well, thank you, trustee Cross. We've reached midterm, or sorry, the midpoint of the fall semester and are now on the run up to finals. They'll be here before we know it. Counselors are getting ready for the spring enrollment period and librarians are continuing to work with students and faculty to support their needs. It is indeed a busy time of year for everybody. So a couple of weeks ago, Dr. McLeod let the cosmetology faculty know that if things did not improve with respect to effectiveness and efficiency, that he may consider shuttering the program in the next few years. Such pronouncements are always worrisome to faculty. The timing of this one, in such close proximity to the ending of verb, has increased the worry. However, he has given a path forward to attempt to turn things around, which includes an overhaul of the curriculum. We appreciate the opportunity given to revitalize the program. We hope that any other programs that are under such scrutiny, that they will be given similar opportunities to rebuild or reconfigure their programs before any final decisions are made. The Kansas Studies Institute, under the direction of Professor Ty Edwards of History, is sponsoring domestic travel for students. One such sponsored trip, led by Professor Rebecca Lane, took a group of students on a trip to the Kansas River. That was, I believe, an environmental science course. Another faculty member led a group of students to the Badlands in conjunction with an honors science course. There've been several other fundings of trips, but those are just a couple of examples. The Center for Teaching and Learning is open, but it is looking for a permanent space. The new initiative comes out of strategic plan, goal number one, strategy number one, which directs the college to, quote, "develop a center for teaching and learning dedicated to assisting faculty with research, discovery, and implementation of effective pedagogical methodology, scholarly teaching, educational technology, and universal design for learning principles." The first CTL faculty fellows have been announced, and they are Maggie Curry-Chu of Dental Hygiene, Megan Doyle of College Success, Damon Fear, sorry, Fear-Born of Drafting, and Ted Rollins of English. This year, the faculty fellows will work on individual education research projects to gain expertise in different pedagogical areas. They'll work with the newly hired faculty during their teaching and learning workshops and will also work on a collaborative project with the aim of scaling it up for the full faculty dues. And those conclude my remarks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, any questions for Brett?
I think I'd first start by saying, Brett, with multiple degrees from KU and from University of Missouri-Kansas City, you are qualified to be a Kansas State student now.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate that.
I had not heard the details about the cosmetology announcement. I really appreciate the tough position we put Dr. McLeod in in trying to make sure our curriculum and our various programs are not, have students to serve and are serving those students well. And so I'm glad there's a potential path forward. I am hoping that every one of our departments that has trouble with enrollment or completion is working every day to make sure we don't get to this, to this point. Because I know Mickey doesn't like to get there and the rest of us don't, but sometimes it's simply necessary.
Mr. Trustee, if I could jump in right there?
Sure.
Trustee Ingram and I were briefed on the issue at cosmetology.
I'm not complaining. I'm not complaining about that.
I know, I'm just.
We've known for, this isn't a surprise to those of us who've been on the board for a while, that we've struggled and, you know, now we're to the point where we really have to focus on getting better. So I hope we can do that.
Any other questions for Brett?
Yes.
Trustee Ratan.
Could you give more detail on what a faculty fellow is and does and how one becomes one? one?
Faculty one, so I didn't hear the question. Faculty.
Faculty fellows.
Thank you.
So the faculty fellows are new to the campus. They came out of the Strategic Plan, Goal One, Strategy One. What they're going to be doing is focusing on developing research and assisting other faculty in their educational research, looking at best practices, developing what we call SOTL, the Scholarship of Teaching and Learning. So they're going to basically serve as our pedagogical experts in service to the other faculty. I do not, right off the top of my head, remember how long their terms are, but this is the first group of four.
This is the first group.
This is, yes.
Well, congratulations to them.
I'd like to follow up on that. Do they continue in their teaching role in their department? Because their job as a fellow is for the entire teaching across campus, right?
Right. My understanding is that they have some release time, but they're still teaching.
Okay. Thank you. I'm seeing nods.
I didn't know. Any other questions?
It's okay. I can pass.
We did meet yesterday, and I guess we'll talk about it later on in the agenda. Collegial Steering Met yesterday. Thank you and to Professor Yu for being there. For the honest and candid discussion we had, I thought it was productive, and so. I don't have any questions at this time. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
The next item on our agenda is a report from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Our appointee is the band The Myth and the Legend, Trustee Craig Muzel.
Thank you.
I'm just getting on the bandwagon.
Chair. The Johnson County Education Resource Triangle is funded by 1/8 cent sales tax countywide, passed by the voters in November of 2008. It funds the KU Cancer Center, it funds KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Olathe Campus. Partly because of inflation, as we've talked about before, sales tax revenues are up 18.3% this year over last year through September 30th. Expect that to continue the rest of the year, which will put the annual amount for the three, to split among the three campuses, over $20 million. Our next meeting is Halloween, October 31st, unfortunately the same time as our committee of the whole meeting, so I will try to split time between those two. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Trustee Muzel? Thank you very much, Trustee Muzel. The next item on our agenda is from the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, the president of that association, Trustee Ingram.
Not for long. Our next meeting is actually December 2nd and 3rd. We will have elections at that point and look forward to having a full slate, quite honestly, so I'm very excited about that. We will be at Neosho, which is in Chanute. The other thing that I was going to mention are the legislative meetings that we'll be having, and as soon as we can get those dates, you know, locked in, please do get those out to us so that we can do that. So we already kind of talked about that, so I won't reiterate anything, but it's a wonderful thing to be a part of, so I hope everyone can join us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Trustee Ingram? My high school football coach died last week, and in his obituary, I didn't realize he coached at Chanute, so.
I'm sorry.
It was Dick Purdy. Thank you for that report. The next item we have on our agenda is the Foundation Report by Trustee Rattan.
Were you able to get the video?
Yeah, I think so.
Great. We have a video we'd like to show from the scholarship luncheon that we had about a month And action.
It is wonderful. Can I just say, wonderful, to have us all back together again? Your participation in the scholarship program is just a great testament to the commitment that you have for not only furthering your education but pursuing your dream.
I'm the first in my family to, like, even graduate from high school. Yeah, my parents are immigrants, so for me, it was like, find a scholarship or don't pursue an education. So the fact that I have the scholarships that I have has allowed me to follow my dreams and, like, get a college education and also fulfill my parents' dreams.
The scholarships for me helped me not only afford school and made it possible, but I have two kids, a two-year-old and a three-year-old, and they're kind of my reason for everything.
The scholarship has helped me out a lot because I get to focus just only on my education. I don't have to worry about my financials, I don't have to worry about anything else but my education, and it's really given me the freedom to, you know, put myself first and put my career first.
I'm here today because I received the Olathe Health Scholarship. Having a scholarship, especially from Olathe Health, just really pulls on my heartstrings. It's given me the opportunity to focus on my studies and, as well as my son, and I was newly elected president of the class yesterday, so I can focus on these people right here.
The scholarship I got really enabled me to take these two years off for school without worrying how that was going to impact myself or my daughter, and it really made pursuing this program feasible for me.
I'm a single mom of four kids. The scholarship provides for full-day daycare. After class, I go to the library and I'll study and do homework before I go home. The childcare costs being covered has helped tremendously.
After I got discharged, it was a hard transition for me, and basically, my opportunity to go to school was wasted because I was homeless. And until I'm at the Veterans Community Project, that's why I wear their shirt, and I want to say thank you to the Deffenbaum Foundation. Couldn't have came at a better time, and I really appreciate that.
It's important that everybody in the community be invested in this college and in helping students attain an education. We know that the success of Johnson County depends upon the success of the people that live here and come here to school.
We really love these stories, the bravery that you all that spoke today, Fchon, the grit of your, the road you are on. We are all about it. We get it, we are here for you, all of the employees in this room. This is why we work at a community college.
I just want to say, as Mr. Rogers says, I'm proud of you and I hope you're proud of you, too.
Now I'll go on with my report. That was such a great luncheon, and everyone had such a unique story of how they got the scholarship, and everyone was so appreciative, so I appreciate the opportunity to attend and help out a little bit. So continuing on the report, the trustee meeting report is Some Enchanted Evening. Tables are selling fast. We welcome participation from the community and the trustees. You can go to jccc.edu/SE. We are expecting a record amount to get raised for student scholarships, and we're going to honor Steve Wilkinson as our Johnson County End of the Year, and we'll be celebrating our student scholarship recipients. Again, logistically, the date is November 12, 2022, at the OP Convention Center at 6:00 PM. Last Sunday was a Lays Up for Learning 5K Run and Walk and the Proceeds Benefit Student Scholarships. There were more than 100 runners who participated, and the 5K route was around campus. There's an Open Petals Society where employees contribute, and the Employee Payroll Campaign has increased participation so far by 20%. They have also partnered with Jeff Hansen Art, and anyone who joins for 350 per payroll level gets a frameable print as an incentive. The CDL Program Grant was approved. JCCC Foundation Grant from the Sunderland Foundation for $2 million was approved. This will help offset the cost of building the new CDL facility and greatly increase the capacity of drivers trained in our community. And the Foundation Executive Committee will meet on October 25th. At that meeting, auditors at Ruben Brown will provide a report to the group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Dawn?
Not a question, but I did see posted that former trustee Paul Snyder was first in his age group.
I saw that.
I did not see how many were in his age group, but I thought it would be important for Paul. There were two? Okay. No? He was proud. He participates every year, so shout out to Paul.
Thank you. Any other questions for Trustee Rattan? For the Foundation? I will just say congratulations and say thank you very much. I'm going to add a point for a report by the College Council. Do we have such a thing?
We don't have a formal report, but what I can share, and Elisa is one of our representatives, Lisa Waldman, our vice president for workforce development and continuing that, is one of our representatives there. We met for the first time this past month, first time of this academic year, and continue to meet on a monthly basis. They're representatives or liaisons from each of our other shared governance structures within the college, so the Academic Branch Council and the Staff Council both have members of their groups that participate on the college-wide council. We also have a trustee spot on that group, as well as a member of cabinet. And so it was the first meeting of the year, and so a lot of the discussion was some broader general discussion of getting to know each other, because there are some new faces in that group, and spent a fair amount of time discussing the flow of communication, the desire for more communication within the college. And I think that really sums up the discussion that we had last month, and they meet again, I believe, next week. Elisa, did I miss anything from? I think it would be, if the Board was open to it, might be a good addition to our standing agenda, that there be communication from College Council.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great. If we don't have anybody, I nominate Nancy to go.
Greg is.
Oh, Greg's already doing it.
Trustee Muzel's, yeah.
I actually knew that. I just thought. Thank you very much. Sorry to catch you flat-footed, but I did just notice your sleeve zippers, and now I'm jealous, so that's awesome. The next item on our agenda is the Committee Reports and Recommendations. I'm serious, they're awesome. You can put your cell phone in there.
I can.
Or cigarettes?
My cigarettes. Keep them on track, please.
Collegial Steering is the next item on our agenda, and yesterday we met over in the Regner Center, and do you want to give the report?
Yep.
We talked about the future committee structure, as well as future items to discuss in that committee, and it was a pretty honest and frank conversation, I thought, and I'm thankful for it. Brett's still here, and Andrea View were there, along with others. We talked about items pertaining to the budget, the enrollment, items, I think, for discussion in the master agreement, articulation and transfer. And my thoughts, if I may submit them to this board, were, frankly, as a litigator, if there's issues to be discussed or things to talk about, I'd like to know them in advance. So as long as I was chair of that committee, I wanted to have open and frank discussion, so I appreciate everyone being there and for at least entertaining me while I had coffee and cookies. So thank you very much. Are there any questions about that committee? That concludes my report.
I would just say, I thought it was a great one. I thought the conversation was really good, there was a lot of flow. I think it's a really strong group of people, so I'm grateful for a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, the next item on my agenda, I'm sorry I did not delegate this, I don't enjoy reading all of it, but the committee of the whole met on September 26, 2022. It was held by Zoom in a webinar format at 8:30 AM. Dr. Bound and myself, Trustee Ingram, Hamble, Muzel, and Rattan attended the meeting. Trustee Laura Smith Everett and Costen were absent that day. We had one item of strategic planning and student success that was an update on the progress for Goal One of the Strategic Plan, which was provided. Included were conversations about where we were in selecting metrics for each sub-goal, the inclusion of student voices, and the details from the co-chairs regarding progress with their teams. And you can find all this in your board packet, so I'm going to summarize this and probably not quite read all of it, but. We also discussed the issue of open enrollment benefits. Colleen Chandler, interim vice president of Human Resources, introduced Michelle Odie and Matt Wheeler with Holmes Murphy, who provided a summary of the benefits, plans renewal for 2023. And there's a summary provided here that includes the reasons JCC employees will see an average increase of 9.61 on their medical premiums through Blue Cross and Blue Shield effective January 1, 2023. The summary did include an overview of the impact the pandemic has had on healthcare, costs associated with the increase in medical claims and the components that led to the rate increase, excuse me, that led to the increase in rates. The benefits of moving JCCC to a January 1 plan were shared along with the costs for employees of the current and new rates. Open enrollment for JCCC is November 1 through November 10, and the current contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City ends in December of 2023. Work on the RFP process for medical coverage provider will begin in late spring, early summer with Holmes Murphy and JCC procurement and benefits team. So we thank everyone there for the work that they've done and really for everyone associated with healthcare and all the stress that's been on them these past, golly, two and a half years now. Also discussed in the committee of the whole was the 2023 plan year rate, and we have a summary here that you can find on pages one and two, I believe, of the board packet, and there's even a summary of the Group Three rate summary there. There's further information from Blue Cross and Blue Shield there that you can see on page three. And then we also discussed a proposed budget calendar for the fiscal year 2023-24. Rachel Lear, the associate vice president of Financial Services and our CFO, presented the preliminary budget development calendar for the fiscal year 2023-24. Budget discussions and activities have already begun for 23-24. Recommendation for the approval of the fiscal year 24 preliminary budget guidelines, including student tuition and fee rates, will be brought to the Board of Trustees at the December 15, 2022, meeting. We also discussed the CDL Driving Range. Information was presented on the Commercial Driver's License CDL Driving Range Project. The report included a program overview, current challenges, reasoning behind the new site, funding of a new site, along with cost considerations, and there was also a discussion related to the next steps and timeline. And so therefore, my fellow trustees, it is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the total budget of $5,077,004 for the CDL Driving Range Project to be financed as follows. With respect to state funding, it's $2,538,502. We do have a private grant of $2 million, a CDL program funds of $538,502, therefore giving us the total of $5,077,400. The $2 million grant will have, it was required as a one-to-one for the matching funds that the state funding required.
That's correct.
Did I say that right? I just want to get all that out. Sorry to be wordy here, but.
As our local match.
Right, that's what we had to match for the state.
The state dollars.
I would so move.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Is there any discussion?
I'm just amazed we can get within $4 of the cost of this thing. Is Tom here? That's impressive.
Any other discussion?
Any relevant discussion.
I would just say how pleased we are with that $2 million opportunity that has been brought forward. And I know it's a team effort, but I'm really pleased that Joy was able to be a part of that and will continue to be a strong advocate for the college, so.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I would echo those sentiments, Mr. Trustee. Precisely as Trustee Ingram just said, but kudos to Joy, who knew of a foundation that would be as passionate about this as we are and how important this is for our community to be able to have another option for getting their CDL licenses, and really high demand right now, so we're glad to be able to provide that through us. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I would like to thank everyone involved. I know Trustee Ingram had at least brought us information from KCC about it, and all of our lobbyists, everyone at the Foundation, that helped make this possible in a public, private hybrid so that we can meet this need, and I think the fact that we get this going. so that we can meet this need. And I think the fact that we get this kind of private support shows, I hope, what kind of institution we run here. So thank you to everyone. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And the most motion passes unanimously. The next items we have are single-source purchase reports of 150,000-plus. The October 22, 2022 Committee of the Whole that met on September 26 was presented single purchase reports by John A. Marshall for an estimated Herman Miller and Noel Furniture and Products for various campus remodel projects in the amount of 200,000. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to John A. Marshall for an estimated amount of 200,000 for fiscal year 23 furniture purchases. And I would so move.
Second.
The the motion has been moved by myself and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. The next item was a single-source purchase report with respect to Scott Rice for fiscal year 23, estimated steel case furniture and products for various campus remodel projects in the amount of 200,000. And it is the recommendation, fellow trustees of the Committee of the Whole, that was us, that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to Scott Rice for an amount estimated to be 200,000 for fiscal year 23 furniture purchases.
Second.
I would so move. And so I move. Trustee Ingram seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think I'll play Jerry Cook here for a minute and note that both of these, not only were reviewed by the Committee of the Whole, but are through a cooperative purchasing arrangement where it's not just Johnson County Community College with other other public entities that are bidding. And so these are that's why we anticipate these are good pricing and are willing to accept them.
I thank you for that, Mr. Trustee. And what does estimated amount mean exactly just for the viewing public?
To exceed, I assume. But it's not to exceed. But Mike, would you like to?
Yeah.
Or actually, Janelle's on the line.
It's my fault. I.
Actually.
I'd be happy to answer that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Janelle?
Yes. We come up with an estimate of what we think all the projects will add up to during the year. So it truly is just an estimate of of the projects that are anticipated. So if we were to need more than that, we would come back to the board, subject to our approval thresholds for more approval at a later date.
What she said. Okay. Thank you very much. I just saw that, and I thought I'd ask. And I've read it 100 times, and I'm confident with it. I just wanted to. I think Trustee Musle does that all the time, just to let the public know. We're not making numbers up. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. I do think there were informational items that were presented. No questions were raised regarding those informational items. In case there's any controversy in the future, the administration has presented them to us in the informational packets provided in the Committee of the Whole. That should conclude my report. Any other questions? Okay, great. The next item on our agenda is the President's Recommendation for Actions. And I will turn it over first to our Treasurer, Trustee Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report can be found in your packet, including the month ended August 31, 2022. Some items of note include Page One, which has the general post-secondary technical educational funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. The general fund unencumbered cash balance was 110 million as of August 31, 2022. And expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is therefore the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended August 31, 2022, subject to audit. I can make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Laura Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Nancy Ingram. Any discussion on the Treasurer's Report hearing?
As always, I would like to thank Ms. Leers for always providing this information and making us look good up here. So thank you, Ms. Leers.
She's kind of like our Danny Manning. She's great.
Yeah, sure.
All those in favor of approving the Treasurer's Report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the monthly report to the Board by our President, Dr. Ann D. Bound.
All right. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to provide this monthly update. Again, always enjoy it when you have the opportunity to spend time with our students. And Henry's another fine example of of the students we're privileged to serve. And so we'll jump in with the so the number of things we want to talk about this evening that actually gets spread throughout the balance of the remaining remainder of the evening. But we'll jump in and we'll start talking about enrollment, if we may. And so there's more good news. In fact, even earlier today during the President's address, I talked about last week, we were down as of Friday, we were down seven tenths of a percent with headcount and and six tenths of a percent in credit hours. That number continues to improve. It's probably going to level out here at this point. And then it would depend on how things continue through the balance of the of the semester, you know, with the opportunity, really the the big opportunity for fall yet is our winter session, which happens between the end of the fall semester and the start of the spring semester, an all-online option for students because those students count in the fall semester headcount. So that's really the variable between now and the end of the semester. So again, we're cautiously optimistic that the numbers remain strong or less weak as we move through the balance of the semester. If we look at and break apart the student enrollment, where it's at today, if we look at where are we down, we're down in out-of-state students and metro-rate students. We are in 10% and 7% across those two groups, respectively. For our female students, it's it's the non-traditional age student where we're down. The 22 to 24-year-olds and the 25 to 59 are kind of the two buckets of students that fit into that demographic, down 10 and 11%. We're down a comparable amount in men in the non-traditional age in that 10% range. Online-only because of the shift primarily to being a much more face-to-face in-person presence this fall. We're actually at 71% of our courses are being delivered face-to-face this semester. So we're down 15% in online-only students. And evening enrollment has slipped this year as well. Where we are up, we are up with full-time students. We're up 2% with full-time students. Our high school enrollment, both through College Now concurrent enrollment and specifically then the Quick Step Plus, which is college algebra, we are up 11% among the group of high school students. And we're up 12% with Hispanic or Latino students. And we're up 19% in our developmental math courses. The the return to in-person affects the activity on campus. And so that's what we see when you walk out around campus. You certainly see that there are many more students here. Well, that's because there are 51% more students on our main campus than there were last semester. Again, among the total group of students that we were serving, right? So we see a decline in in both online and hybrid courses. You see an increase in face-to-face or students on campus. 51% here on our main campus, if you compare this year and last year, and 24% more at the Olathe Health Education Center. And so that's what we're seeing, you know, kind of the the give and take of enrollment of moving back more face-to-face. In addition to that, from a continuing ed standpoint, actually, the numbers continue to be strong there. They're holding their own plus a little. And certainly, our adult ed enrollment is is bolstering that number for this year. Again, as you can see by the chart here, it continues to move in the right direction. We're at about 64% of our goal for the fall semester for a continuing ed. And you can see comparatively to previous years, it looks good. Scott, let's see if there are any questions yet at this point? Yes.
Quick question. The 200,000 that we put into the budget, that's for this year?
That's for this year.
Is it for the entire school year?
It is for the entire school year.
Clarify that.
Yes.
Because we have utilized.
About 125,000 as of last week of the 200,000 has been allocated. And so.
Is that kind of where we thought we would be with that? Or was there any way of knowing?
Actually.
No way of knowing.
Margie, would you like to? Yep.
Oh, look, another purple person.
They just keep popping up everywhere.
Actually, after the deadline for the Quick Step Plus College Algebra, we've awarded 150,000 of that money. So we have $50,000 left for the spring semester. And then we had approximately 45,000 for any out-of-state students who participate in College Now and Udora and Baldwin students. And we've used all of that money.
Thank you.
Did you explain what that 200? You just mentioned the 200,000. We all know what it is, but it's important. So what did we put 200,000 in the budget for?
We put $200,000. You all put $200,000 under the request for financial support for students in that are high school students in Johnson County in order to offset the cost of their, I think it was up to two courses for this semester, to help cover the cost of the tuition that they would pay to take JCCC classes at their high school. So.
So if we've used three quarters of that allocated amount, is it do we traditionally have fall enrollment is a lot more, a lot higher than our spring? So that's okay that we're?
Yes.
Because that's okay. That helps. And have we traditionally had Baldwin and Udora students participate in large numbers before? Or is this a very large?
No, they they have participated.
Pretty. Okay. Thank you. And then I have a question. I was at a soccer tournament in a hotel in Iowa weekend ago and had two parents of high school students talking about how confusing all the options are for high school students. We have baccalaureate, we have AP classes, we have College Now. There's just it's it's a menagerie of options with words that don't attach to any meaning. One of those is Quick Step Plus. Do you know why we is can we just call the dang thing college algebra? Do we have any control of that? Do we are we is somebody telling us we have to call it Quick Step Plus?
No. It was called Quick Step Plus because the old program under which College Now was done originally was called Quick Step. And so when they added this, it had an extra wrinkle in it. So they just called it Quick Step Plus, and nobody ever changed the name.
Okay. Wow, that's that is I thought you were going to give me a very long answer about how the regents and someone else dictates. Okay, that's so much easier than I thought. Can we change that? I'm just going to make a motion right now. We change the name to college algebra.
We'll send that to the Bursar's Office for you, Trustee.
Thank you. Thank you.
It'll go to student success.
We won't change.
All that to to say, I appreciate you giving the the numbers disaggregated as well because that's a really important part for me. My other question is, the credit and headcount numbers are compared to last year, correct?
At this point, last year.
Okay. Can we get the way we get continuing ed, can we, in the next couple of months, get a comparison of our enrollment now that we're kind of stable of the last two or three years to get a sense of where we are from a longer trajectory?
Absolutely, we can.
Okay. And then I just wanted to speak to the scholarship luncheon and how many women we heard speaking mothers. And when we went to the ACCT conference, I don't know if it was the last one or the one before, one of the keynote speakers was a single mom who started a program to bring awareness to the fact that colleges don't track single mothers as a demographic and how much burden there is. And just nationally last week, NPR was talking about that we still have women who have not come back to the workforce because our one of our main roles in this society is to be caregivers, either to aging parents or to children in the home. And that I hope we, as a board, can really maybe be a little more aggressive about how we support single parents, particularly single mothers, who, according to Dr. Bound, has dropped 10 to 11% non-traditional women. And I would guess a part of that is they're in caregiver roles that they cannot they cannot go to school and still be in a caregiver role without some kind of support from us. I know a lot of that's the foundation. And so I'll repeat those sentiments at the foundation meeting. But I think for us, I think about that keynote speaker a lot. And I think about that that is a group of students that is not often one that I myself tune into and are obviously very much part of our community.
Can I help on that real quick and ask as a follow-up? What is that number, that 10, 11%?
That is the the difference between the enrollment of the 22 to 24-year-olds and the 25 to 59-year-old women compared to that enrollment number last year.
I understand. What is the number?
What is the actual number, the raw number?
Do we know? And I'm catching you flat-footed. I'm sorry. I'm just.
If we look at that number, it is, if I'm reading this correctly, about 900 it is 984 women in the 22 to 24 age group. That's the total number of students. And 25 to 29, excuse me, 25 is a sounds like an age group, 22 to 59, 25 to 59 is 2,270 students in that group.
That we're down?
That is the total number that we have enrolled this year. If I'm reading this correctly, we're down 123 in the 22 to 24 age group and 240 in the 25 to 59.
Okay, okay, good.
Yep.
So it's roughly 360. It's like it's like looking at votes by precinct, like they add up.
They do add up. They do add up. And if I recall, Trustee Smith Everett, from the conference, it was last fall.
Okay. Time.
If I remember, the the statistic was the graduation rates of of parents, students and as parents or parents as students, I don't remember exactly how they worded it, was approximately 3%, the completion rates. Yeah, this is this.
And we're lucky. We have childcare facilities on campus. Could couldn't can we expand them? Can we provide them in different ways? I know one of the conversations at that conference was about evening hours for for people that have to work and then also want to go to school. And that's
Yep.
an option that is, you know, there's lots of ways we could expand what we already have. But 300 women not back is significant. That's significant.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Dr. Bound?
On that, I've got a couple more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So next week is National Transfer Student Week, the 17th through the 21st. For the listening audience and those in the room or the viewing audience, I guess if you're listening, you wouldn't see it. If you were listening and watching, you might notice that our trustees. If you were listening and watching, you might notice that our trustees and myself, we are wearing... We are dressed somewhat differently than we might be at board meeting night. And so as we prepare for next week, we've invited our faculty and staff on campus to wear the apparel of their alma mater, of their school of choice or their alma mater on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and inviting them in classes and engaging with students to talk about where they went to college and why they went to college. About 41% of our students each year will transfer to a four-year partner. And so it's, again, a big number. Next week, during the week, we have many of our transfer partners here on campus. KU Edmonds will be here. Baker will be here. You can see the list of colleges that will be here, both those within the state of Kansas and those without. And there's special emphasis placed on an ongoing basis. And also this week, our Tuesdays, our transfer Tuesdays. And so I noticed that, you know, each of you are wearing your apparel from colleges you have gone to and are important to you. I wondered if we could model for our... For others who may be watching this, you're wearing apparel. Where did you go to school and what did you study and why did you pick that school? Maybe quickly as we move through this.
Can we start over there?
Sure.
Yeah, I went to Johnson County Community College right out of high school. I picked it because I had had a family history of going there for generations. And it was really... I had heard so many great, excellent experiences, especially with the teachers in particular, the culture here. It was absolutely amazing. You have faculty here that is really here to engage you, get you where you need to be, learn what you need to learn. And they're not... They're more focused on the students than on maybe the research or something else they're working on. And that was really extremely valuable. And the cost was a huge benefit for me. It was something that I felt like I could afford without being crushed by debt when you graduate college. So it was a great place for me. And I eventually transferred to Emporia State where I also studied accounting as well and got my degree there.
Well, I will say that FAMU chose me. The college president came to Kansas City and had a meeting with me because I had... Apparently, I was a smart kid. And I earned an academic scholarship to study chemical engineering at Florida A&amp;M University. It satisfied my need to get out of Kansas and never come back, but here I am again. But I had gotten accepted to both Tulane and Stanford, but had... Did not know I was a poor kid, did not know how I was going to afford college. But I had a hope and a dream, and FAMU fulfilled that. It is a historically black college, and that was very educational and enriching for me. I will add that my husband is a transfer to FAMU. He followed me from KC, KCC because I gave him ultimatum that if you wanted to continue this relationship, you should end up at Florida A&amp;M Rattlers. So...
Well, I went to Kansas State because it was 40 miles from home.
What?
Yeah, I really, seriously did. Spent five of the best years of my life there. But I will say, so I didn't transfer, but I just want to put a plug in because both of my daughters ended up, one at K-State, one at KU, with 25 to 30 hours of either college now or AP classes or direct taking of classes during the summer here at Johnson County Community College. So it is a great place for everybody in this county to make sure their kids get a lot of credits at an affordable price.
So I went to... Graduated from Western Michigan University, have a degree in... Bachelor of Science degree in geography and specifically urban and regional planning. I was a transfer student from Northern Michigan University, which some of the state universities, regional state universities in Michigan, particularly in more remote areas like the Upper Peninsula, serve as both a community college and a university. And so I did my first year at Northern Michigan and decided that when there's snow on the ground in May, it's time to go somewhere else.
I grew up in Lawrence. Dick Carter doesn't want me to say I grew up in a trailer, but I did. And then we moved into a house, actually, when I was in high school. And I didn't want to go to KU. I wanted to play football at Ottawa. And I blew out my knee and defaulted into KU, which was the best thing that ever happened to me. I met my wife there. She was from a K-State family, the rogue that came to KU. And I spent five years at KU. And then I took two summer courses here at JCCC and went to UMKC Law. And I deeply admire the investment that Kansas makes at all levels to education, especially in higher ed. Nine and a half years on this board, and I've loved it and I'm proud of it and proud of all of you. And I will say, I know two or three of you went on to graduate degrees you didn't talk about at other institutions. I think University of Virginia for Trustee Musil and Dr. Bound still going to school somewhere. I don't know. And I'll stop there. So thank you.
Well, I chose Kansas State and really had anticipated perhaps going away. And my parents didn't want me to do that. They didn't think I'd come back home, which is probably a lot of truth to that. But I majored in dietetics and nutrition, and really that was the best place to go at that particular time. So it was a four-year... It was called the Cupid Program. It was coordinated undergraduate program in dietetics and nutrition. No, that can't be right. But anyway, it was. And so, great experience, but much like Trustee Musil, all three of our children got their start here at the community college. And I remember one of my children, probably the youngest son, being a little late with his application and enrollment. And I remember coming over and trying to figure out where I needed to go on this campus and standing in line in some stairwell with a bunch of people waiting in line to get to the bursar's office. So great start here. I wish I'd had that opportunity, but didn't truly. But loved K-State, so...
Can I have some beads?
Pardon?
Can I have a set of beads?
Sure. Get there.
You offered them earlier and I said no.
I don't know.
You inspired me.
Trustee Smith Everett.
This meeting's getting early. I had the privilege of going to William Jewel College, a small liberal arts college in Liberty, Missouri. I was born in Kansas but grew up in Missouri and actually went to William Jewel because it was far enough away from home that I could pretend I was in a different place, but close enough that if I needed money or desperately needed something else, I could get home. And I was a very privileged kid who my father actually became employed there full-time so that I could go to school for free. So at that time, dependents rent for free. And so he got the job just so that I could get a free education. And I only paid for room and board. And the other thing was I had a boy who also was trailing me, and he had no idea about college and didn't know how to do it. And my parents told him that if he wanted to continue dating me, he would need to get a college education. And then he said, "Well, how do I do that?" And they said, "Well, actually, if you go to work at William Jewel, you can pay for your classes for free." And so my husband went to Maple Woods and did two... Through high school, graduated high school with almost an associate's degree. And he cleaned floors. He was a custodian for almost the entire time we were in college together and got all of his college paid for, for free. And the last year got hired by the technology department. You know, when we had computer labs? Remember those days where there were computer labs? So, yeah, it was a great place. And I... There are still things from that education that I remember, professors that affect you for years and years and years. So just like this place, incredible people, very grateful for that.
It's like Will Hunting.
There you go. Just like Will Hunting.
Well, thank you very much for indulging me in this. You know, it... We want our students to know that they have options, right? Knowing that they can work their way through school, they can pursue scholarships, they can pursue their dreams, starting with us and going straight into the workplace. Or they can take their dreams, go into the workplace and continue their education. Or they can take their dreams and they can transition to one of our great, great partners here in the state of Kansas and beyond. Here within the state of Kansas, we offer, with our four-year partners, 160 different degree pathways across each of our public and private institutions here in the state. And you may recall that last month, we signed a transfer agreement with the independent colleges here in the state of Kansas with a two-plus-two agreement that if you come to a community college, in this case, Johnson County Community College, and transfer to one of our great partners that are independent, private colleges, that they can transfer as a junior. And that's a really, really big thing, and we applaud the independent colleges for doing that. And I think we'll see, among our region universities, we'll see more and more activity as they watch what their independent partners have done. When I look at our transfer schools, where our students go, our top two are represented in this room to my left and to my right. But UMKC is our third highest transfer school, followed by Pittsburgh State, Emporia State. And then if we look at the top 10 or so, then we go out of state for one and come right back in. But one of our top 10 partners is right here in the community, and that's Mid-America Nazarene. And they are a wonderful partner for us in offering opportunities for our students. Mizzou is on there, University of Missouri Columbia, at a distant number 10 on the list.
Top 10?
But top 10 nonetheless. I noticed that Western didn't make it anywhere on the list. So anyways, just a couple more quick things here to keep us moving along. We will move to a in-person committee of the whole meeting, starting on October 31st here in the boardroom. It will be an in-person meeting with a streaming option available. Our AV and TV and IS teams have done a really good job of figuring out a very good viable option for us. If people don't have streaming capability within their home, they can come to the collab or if there's seating available in here, come and participate in the meeting. But certainly, there'll be space in the collab where they can observe the meeting if they don't have the technology to be able to do that. So... And then the last thing, just a few quick updates. It's referenced in the agenda slide. We have filled our chief information officer position. Rob Caffey will be joining us next month. And we recognize Dell Lovett earlier today during the president's address. Dell loves this place. And the... Her willingness to step on... Up and taking what turned out to be a two-year assignment, really, is well above and beyond. And so Dell, on behalf of this college, thank you so much for the work that you've done, the leadership that you provided and that we know you'll continue to do. So thank you so much. With Terry's upcoming retirement and Caitlin Murphy moving into the role that Terry is holding today, that created a spot in our team. And Liz Loomis will be joining the president's office team next week, and we'll begin the transition process as we move through that. And we will relaunch the leadership role in student success and engagement after the first of the year. We did not end up with a candidate of choice to fill that position now, so we'll begin after the first of the year with that. And as I said, and just so you know, coming at the next meeting, our next board meeting will give you updates on career laddering, post what could follow verb the group has met and has brought forward recommendation. And then we'll also take a look at our metrics for the year during our board meeting next time. And there's been a request for us to find time to look at the Noel Levitt's Student Satisfaction Survey results. So I think that's what I have for now. And then I'll kind of give you the staff thinking related to committee structure and so forth after the next portion of the meeting. That concludes this portion of my report.
Just to be clear, I think you asked me earlier, you're going to do that under new business?
Old business.
Old business?
Yep. Following the discussion that the committee and committees and the committee looking at policies, the discussion there.
Very good.
I just wanted to comment to commend the group for... That was interviewing and picking candidates for the student success role, which I continue to butcher the name, so I won't try, that you went back to the drawing board to start over again instead of settling for any person that just isn't a right fit. And I... That's hard to do. And often, after all that work, it's easy to just decide to settle for something or someone that isn't the right fit. And I'm glad to know that the group was willing to do the hard thing. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for that perspective. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Bound after that report?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. The next item on our agenda is new business. Does anyone have any new business to present?
Bring us something really... Yeah, thank you. I am just kind of curious when we're gonna... We've kind of had a lot of talk about being back to normal and Henry was talking about. I know Andy's talking, you know. I'm curious about when we're going to let people back into the boardroom, just citizens. They are allowed now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. All right.
To the extent that seating is available. I mean, we have, yeah.
Okay.
Limited amount of seating, but yes.
All right. Great. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
We have overflow in the collab.
Collab, absolutely. And also, I've talked about, I think with each of you individually about this, but as we think about the reimagining of the first floor of this building to become a much more student-focused space with many of the different student development, student life activities, honors coming down here to the first floor, we've also worked through the kind of adjustment of the president's office space, as long as we're doing this other construction. And the goal would be to, in essence, extend the boardroom back this way into the space where today Caitlin and Christina sit, but to extend the boardroom that way, to expand the size of the boardroom so that there is more seating available. It was the most cost-effective option to be able to do that at a time when we were already digging into this building. And I'd anticipate that recommendations for that would come forward to the board maybe late this year, certainly early next calendar year in order for all of this work to happen. And so that would... Part of the intent is expanding the size of the boardroom so that there is a larger space for physical presence at the board meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then we'd readjust the space from an office standpoint. And actually, the architects have done a nice job at helping come up with a solution that doesn't expand the footprint of... Really expand the footprint of the president's office and boardroom space, but accomplishes the same things.
Thank you very much. Any... Anything else under new business? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda is old business. And I believe we have a committee review by the ad hoc committee of Trustee Musil, Trustee Rutan, and Trustee Smith Everett. And who is presenting there, may I ask?
He didn't coordinate. Do I, Mr. Musil?
Trustee Smith Everett.
I will have that recommendation momentarily.
I apologize. I...
No, that's...
Whatever it is.
That's fine. I did not... For my name, past page one. My fault.
Oh, no, I've caught you flapping. It's probably my fault.
All right. On page 21 of your board packet, you will find the recommendation. And it is the recommendation of the college administration that until the later date of time that a new committee policy 111.03 is adopted or becomes effective, the Board of Trustees will extend the Committee of the Whole Pilot Program Plan. We will continue the temporary suspension in whole of Committee's Policy 111.03 and temporary suspension in part of the purchasing exceptions to competitive solicitation policy 215.05 and disposition of surplus property policy 215... 215.05 and disposition of surplus property policy 215, I don't know how to say, .07 as shown in the Board Packet for the February 18th, 2021 meeting, and reinstate an audit committee as well as the previously suspended portions of the internal and external audit committee, or policies, 210.5, which shall provide for operation of the audit committee as shown in the Board Packet for the February 18th, 2021 meeting. In other words, we are recommending that we are going to move our Committee of the Whole just a few more months while we iron out the committee structure we recommended at the retreat, and that the audit committee be reinstated immediately after this meeting. So I can make that motion?
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Musil. Any discussion? Any discussion? I think we had quite a discussion at the board retreat in September, so that was a public meeting. Many of you were there that are in the audience, and I don't think there's any need to rehash it, so I just wanted to let the public know that we did that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by sending aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. The motion passes unanimously. Trustee Smith Everett, does that conclude that report?
Yes, we will have more information about the new committee structures in the coming months.
And then we've got an item here for the Policy Ad Hoc Committee of Trustee Ingram and Trustee Everett.
Yeah, so I'll let her, Trustee Ingram, speak to that.
Yes, and it's just basically that the Policy Committee met, I mean, we provided our presentation at the retreat, and again, a very healthy discussion regarding that. Policy work is being cleaned up in preparation for further discussion, and many of you have probably looked at the timeline that you are going to review with us, Dr. Bound, but we do anticipate further discussion at Committee of the Whole, which is on the 31st, and our anticipation is that we will have a recommendation to bring forward at the November board meeting so we can move forward with committee structures, the ad hoc committee for nominations, and be ready to roll after the first of the year. So we'll be working on that. We will be meeting with, yes. Yep, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That makes it official in the board meeting. And that concludes new, old business. Excuse me, you have?
Yeah. Would you like, from a staff perspective, I've talked to each of you individually, but thought it might be helpful just to kind of walk through. So if we pick up the report, there we go. And so again, this is from a staff perspective as something to consider. It is not the Committee's recommendation, either the Committees that have been working on this, but taking the feedback from the board retreat and trying, as requested, trying to operationalize that as we move forward. So this is not, this isn't even a recommendation, this is, here's where we are today. So as Trustee Ingram stated just a moment ago, the policies, the 100 Series, Series 100 Board Policies that you've been looking at, again, it would be, I think, the hope that we would consider those, the proposal for those as the revisions, if you will, at the November board meeting, and that we'd have further discussion at the Committee of the Whole meeting on October 31st. And then taking the discussions from the retreat and picking up on generally the six Committees that were recommended from the Committee on Committees, these are in alphabetical order. They are not to imply anything other than they are in alphabetical order. But, and I'll walk through these, each of these, actually, no, I won't. The six Committees that were discussed, maybe with slightly different naming, naming is certainly up to you, but based on discussions with Cabinet and others, and as was referenced earlier, we had some discussion with Collegial Steering yesterday to get interactions they may have to the, a new board structure. So audit, board governance, could be board development, board governance, but that really is about the board self-governance, employee engagement and development, inclusion and belonging, management and finance, and student success, were variations of what was recommended, or at least for consideration, in the retreat. And then we looked at, you know, at least once things get up and running, you know, is there a way to kind of balance these out so that, you know, again, if you choose to pursue the committee day, committee morning, whatever we describe, decide to call it, but committee meeting followed by next committee, followed by next committee, we think there may be a way to manage those in such a way that you could, I don't think the understanding, at least that we had, was that there would be six Committees every month, but there would be some regularity rhythm to each of the Committees' meetings, and we'll continue to work on that. As we think about a potential timeline for how to move forward with this, you just acted on the first one, and that is to extend Committee of the Whole and to reinstate audit. And we've referenced this now several times, that there would be further discussion among you as trustees regarding both the policy revisions and the proposed committee structure that if you're ready to go, we would bring that forward, you would bring that forward for action. I say, consider the policy, because I, again, you'd be asked to approve them, let me say that differently, if that's where the board is, that at that same time would be the timeline that you as Chair would appoint a nominating committee to work through committee assignments and so forth. At this point, the thinking was from a staff standpoint, but we're open to other options, but it's based on the fact that our, that your organizational meeting, when you approve liaisons and committees and so forth, that is per policy that you amended a year, or that the trustees amended a year ago, now happens in January. So that's why that says January. Could you do something different than that? Yes, I think so. We just want to work with Kelsey, General Counsel, to be able to really think that through and do that in a prudent manner. And that, at least by the January 19th meeting, you would approve a slate of officers, liaisons, committee designations, and so forth, and that no later than the February meeting, you'd move to the new structure. So then there are things that we have to do behind the scenes. So, you know, for example, the Committees' descriptions in the Committee Policy 111.03, it identifies each of the Committees, and there's a description that goes with it. So we've got to get that cleaned up and move through kind of, I think, at least my recommendation, and move through both the Committee on Committees and the Policy Committee. And then, once we get everything figured out that we would need to do, I would need to do staff assignments for each of the Committees, and then we would work to establish annual working agendas, or at least a start of an annual working agenda. And then finally, make sure that from a process standpoint, again, from a staff standpoint, making sure that we have a good process with you for establishing committee agendas and so forth as we go back into a committee structure. So that's just from a staff standpoint, what we have for your, at least for consideration. So. Anyways.
Thank you.
There you go.
Any questions for Dr. Bound?
Actually, I have a question for you, Chairman. Do you see us being involved? There are six Committees, there are seven of us. I know we said that you would not be on a committee, or you would not chair a committee. Do you see us being on two or one, or have you thought about the structure for your nominating committee? Or you'll just leave that to the committee to decide?
You don't have given it much thought. Historically, I think everyone has served on two or three Committees, and we generally have two or three trustees. At this point, I think that's the purpose of a nominating committee, generally appointed by the Chair to make recommendations of who we think should serve where, and typically, whether it was Trustee Musil, or Trustee Ingram, or Trustee Cook, or Trustee Lindstrom, you would get a call and say, is this okay with you? What do you think about being on these Committees? And often, in the custom that I, in my observation and experience, board members that have served longer have some idea about where to put people, but we do generally try to consult you, and at the end of the day, you may get stuck where we put you, but you'll have some input.
Yeah.
As to where that'll be.
When we did our research and our calls, I know a couple of the schools I talked to indicated that they tried to utilize and leverage the strengths of their, of their Chair, of their trustees. So if someone was in banking, of course, they went into the finance and audit committee. So, you know, I think that, of course, I know the nominating committee will consider those talents and skills and interests.
Yes, I think that certainly is an excellent point and question, and I can tell you, while this has been one of the privileges and thrills of my lifetime to work closely with Dr. Bound and his administration, I'm not looking for anything to do. So I'm happy for all of you to have committee opportunities. Certainly, I need to know what's going on, and certainly I will pay attention, but I think it's a good chance for everyone, and Trustee Smith Everett and I have talked about this, to give people chances to chair and to learn to lead. And, you know, I can't thank Dr. Cook and Trustee Musil enough. I paid attention, even in disagreement, I paid attention to what they were doing and how to conduct the business of the board. And to be fair, and I think if any of you get this chance, and I hope you do someday to sit here, how important it is to be fair, include everyone, for better or for worse, the community put all of us here, and so we have to respect that. And I think part of that process is giving people chances to lead and learn. Sometimes people get stuck, in my opinion, on Committees they don't want to be on because they need to go learn about that area. So I think, yes, you're right. I think, like, for instance, management and finance would be a good fit for you, or for someone with a business background. But at the same time, maybe student success would be a good place to put Trustee Ingram. I don't know. So. Who's served on that Committee before?
Do whatever.
Love cracking her up. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just didn't know if you'd given any thought about the just overarching structure that you'd like to see. So you answered it.
Yeah, I really would like for you all, or whoever's on the nominating committee, I don't know who that'll be yet, I'll probably talk to Trustee Ingram and each of you as to who that might be. And then I think it's important that we do do things as a group. I was the oldest of my four brothers, and often they'd look to me to make a decision, and I'd say, no, I'm not picking where to eat, you guys need to vote. And they're like, why? I go, because I don't want you to complain if I pick, like, so. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I think the advantage of this system, and I will note now that we're, the pendulum is swinging back past where we were before. We went to Committee of the Whole, and now we're kind of swinging back with six Committees, which has a potential of unintended consequences that I think we all discussed at the retreat, and may get us back into the weeds more than we wanted. But the advantage is that they're noticed as a public meeting, every trustee can attend every one of them. If we do a committee day, everybody can attend all those. So whether you're on the Committee or not, you can have some presence and some input. And so I think it's important that we figure out how many can be on the Committee. We traditionally add two, because if you had three there, you would get into an Open Meetings Act issue. So we're going to solve that by noticing the meeting. So I think, you know, we can have two or three on every Committee, and I think generally if you're interested in the Committee, I would hope the nominating Committee would put you on there unless you would be absolutely terrible at it, which would apply to me in certain circumstances. My thoughts.
Any other questions, comments? I think this is still old business, correct?
Mr. Chair, I would just say that I think historically, I feel like we have reached out to people and asked what they're, you know, what they're interested in. I think that, you know, you kind of start off with a plan, thinking, oh, that person, da-da-da-da-da, and it just kind of all resolves itself. But in all truthfulness, you're right. I mean, there are just some things that fit a little bit easier. I mean, you know, my responsibility with KACC, I've actually incurred now for three years just because I was the president of that organization. But I'm welcoming somebody else to, you know, to enjoy and explore that opportunity, too.
And I will say, sorry to interrupt you, we still have the liaison positions to assign. There's a host of things.
So there's a lot of ways.
I don't want anybody doing five to 10 different things, you know. It can be too much.
I agree. Yeah. So, you know, but I feel like you'll be very happy and enjoy the experience, no matter what it is.
If I can, about the staff's timeline, we have ours pretty clearly articulated here, and I'm imagining that all the things that you mentioned, that I've been concerned, I know there's a lot of behind the scenes that you all have to do to get yourselves reorganized around what we've thrown out here, that can happen at the same time as we are moving through our process, so that the staff is working on the things like the assignments, the descriptions and all that, and that will just start popping up in Committees of the Whole, would you imagine, on its way to the December, January?
I have, you know, in my mind, I have one or more people identified for each of the Committees. That would be the lead staff people for those Committees.
You want to tell them now, or you want to?
No, I want to talk to them individually. I want to talk to them. Some of them are quite obvious.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other discussion here?
Thank you for putting that, meshing all that together, because it's not easy. And I really, we went into this concerned about staff time and making it less, not harder on staff, hopefully less hard on staff. I don't know if we accomplished that, but if we didn't, I hope we'll hear about it and find ways to be better at it.
Yep.
Any other discussion before we move on to the consent agenda? The consent agenda is the next item on our agenda here this evening. Is there any item that any board member would like to pull off of the consent agenda? On page 30, I'd like to pull off the Regents of the University of Michigan. Is that a grant? Yes.
Yes.
If we can pull that off, and then I think if I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I've moved for the consent agenda with all items except the item on page 30 that the Chair just identified.
Thank you, I fumbled that.
I'll second.
So the motion has been made to approve the consent agenda minus the item on page 30, which I think I'm just asking for discussion on, if I could take that up in discussion. How do we get a grant from the University of Michigan?
Wait here.
Vote on the motion.
Yeah. Well, I was going to take discussion first, but I guess I can do that. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Other than that.
Other than that, when I took that one out.
We did take that one out. So like, other than the item on page 30, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. There's no opposition, that motion passes unanimously to approve the consent agenda, and now we have item, the item on page 30, which we'll move and approve here subsequently. I just wanted to, I don't know anything about it, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, we've never really done it this way, but I think we should, if somebody just wants to get a question on a consent agenda, we should just do that without, and then vote on the whole consent agenda later. We've done it the other way, but it seems cumbersome, so.
Yeah.
You were trying, you were trying to do it the right way, and I preempted you, but I don't have a problem. If somebody just wants to discuss something as opposed to really have it considered separately and voted on separately, we can do that as a general course, I think.
I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
So, this is for the PAVE program, which are peer advisors for veterans' education. And they are actually students here who are also veterans, and they work with our Veterans' Office, and they are like peer mentors to other veteran students who come to JCCC, help them assimilate to college, life, whatever.
And the University of Michigan, the connection to the University of Michigan is a national program, correct?
Yes, it is a national program, and it originates from there.
If I understand, we're one of the few colleges that has this program.
That's correct.
And help for veterans, and I remember while I was
And help for veterans, and I remember while I was campaigning, I met some veterans out on campus, and they were singing the praises of this program.
Mm-hmm. That's correct, it is a great program, and not many do it.
I have two brothers that were veterans that came here, and I appreciate that greatly, and then we had a speaker at Rotary Monday. I am turning into Jerry Cook, um, who is the editor of the U.S. Army, uh, publishing, U.S. Army, University of Army, Pre- Press.
Press.
And, uh, we have service members that have eight to 12 different deployments, uh, in our overstressed military, as we ask them to do things in places like, uh, all over the world, and I just thought I'd note that as, uh, there's, there's a cost to the things that we do, so I, I'm glad that we worked to take care of that, that population, and I, I think now I need to ask for a motion to approve that, that item, if I may have such a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the agreement with Regents University of Michigan for the PAVE program for the second renewal through December 31, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee, and it's been seconded, moved by Trustee, uh, Musel, seconded by Trustee Ingram. Is that right?
That's fine, I'll second.
And all those in, any discussion on that, other than what we just had? Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed? No, I believe, uh, that concludes our Consent Agenda. The next item on our agenda is the Executive Session.
You have the script?
I do not. If I did, I'd lost it.
No, they memorized?
I don't, actually, sorry.
Tiani, Tiani.
If I could take a, a moment for a point of, of personal privilege, uh, to, um, uh, recognize our longtime administrative assistant, Terry Slisch, who is retiring, I didn't think she wanted any recognition, so I was going to adhere to that wish.
She doesn't really want it, but I don't know how you.
I, I was in the.
Without this board meeting, without, um, Terry, I beg, I beg your forgiveness.
So I think I'd like to congratulate Terry Slisch on her retirement, uh, which is coming up at the end of the year, but as I understand it, she has so much time and vacation banked that, uh, she'll be leaving us on October 31st, so I thank her greatly, she helped this, uh, younger trustee and lawyer learn to do the job and, and just to answer dumb questions, and then support me now as Chair, so, uh, I think, I think it'd be appropriate to go around the room if we could, I think she's been such a vital part of what we've done, and, uh, i- if I could start with, uh, Trustee Hamel, if you'd like to go.
Just thank you, Terry, for everything you've helped me with, um, helped me learn a lot of things here, um, in my first 10 months of being on the Board, so thank you. Wish you a lot of luck and, uh, have a lot of fun on your rest and relaxation.
Uh, as I wrote, uh, I appreciate her kindness, uh, her smile, uh, she's a soft-spoken powerhouse, and will miss her expertise and knowledge of this institution.
I, I would just say thank you, Terry, there are very few people in the history of Community, of Johnson County Community College that have touched as many leaders in the administration, on the Board, and students, and have helped mold this to what it is today, and the people in Johnson County are indebted to you for that service. Thank you.
I, I, I can talk all night, but I, I just gave away. Terry, thank you very much. Uh, I, I spoke earlier, I, I mean, uh, from the bottom of my heart, uh, the random phone calls and emails that I would call and ask you, so I didn't look dumb to any of these people.
Well, that part didn't work.
Ah, there it is.
Thank you very much, and I wish you, I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
I would just say thank you as well, Terry. I remember as a, a new trustee, there were times where I wouldn't sit down to the computer until 10 o'clock at night, and I'd think, oh, I'll shoot Terry an email right now because it's a good time for me, and two seconds later, I would get a response from her. So I learned very quickly that I needed to abide by the workday and try to fit into the workday, because otherwise, she was 24/7 all the time, so Terry, you will be missed. You're a friend, uh, we look forward to seeing you around. Thank you for everything.
I would just echo some of the same, um, comments. Terry, you have an incredible amount of institutional knowledge, you have carried out your role with four, is it four or five presidents?
Five presidents, 24 trustees.
24 trustees, God, that's a lot of us, that is a lot to put up with. Always with grace and dignity and that steady, calm demeanor of yours that you are so well-known for, and, um, I don't know what, what camera to look into to tell her thank you so much and how much we appreciate, um, all that she's given, and I, uh, echo your sentiments. I learned early on, she will respond at all hours of the day and night, and, um, for all of us in the first couple of months, it's, it's an incredible, uh, amount to learn, and she always handles it with such, um, grace and calm, uh, that it just is unreplicated. So thank you so much for all you've given, we'll sure miss you.
Did, did Caitlin run out of the room?
She did not.
No, Caitlin's still there. Hiding.
She doesn't dare go anywhere this way, just like I don't.
Thank you, Terry. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into Executive Session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending person.
That's not the right one. Never mind, don't read that, because that's not true.
State class in San Diego. He'll read everything he put in front of him.
I read it, I don't have the script.
Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into Executive Session, I think, uh, what's the purpose?
Um, to discuss, uh, let me see if Kelsey has it.
Put her on the spot.
I've misplaced my script, I apologize.
It's matters of confidentiality, isn't it?
For important matters of the government.
It has to be one of the certain.
I apologize for fumbling through this.
Up until the last moment.
She saves the day.
Up until the last moment.
I've got an update from our producer, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to go into Executive Session for, um, to discuss matters relating to security measures, protecting a public body and public buildings, which if discussed at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures. No action will be taken during this session, the Executive Session will last, uh, for 30 minutes, uh, beginning at, what time should we begin?
7:05.
7:05, I think is appropriate. 7:05 PM and ending at 7:35 PM, at which time, an open session will resume at this same location, and we would like to invite, uh, Dr. Uh, Doctors Bound, Neil, uh, Chief, Police Chief Greg Russell, Seth Moulis, Alicia Pacer, and Kelsey Nizar to join the Executive Session. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Ingram has moved, and Trustee Musel has seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Seeing none, thank you for coming this evening, uh, we'll meet at 7:05 and be back here at, uh, 7?
35.
35. We're back after our Executive Session here regarding, uh, public safety and security measures. We've used the full 30 minutes, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, for another 15 minutes, if I may. Anybody like to make that motion?
So moved. Oh, I'll second.
Uh, Trustee Ratan has moved for an additional 15 minutes of Executive Session time, Trustee Ingram has seconded, and I think, uh, what do we do, 7:40?
Sure.
7:45.
7:45, whatever.
7:45, we'll, we'll commence at 7:45 and then finish at 8:00 PM. Uh, all those in favor of such motion, please.
I guess, sorry.
Aye.
By saying aye.
That's what I did.
All those opposed, uh, there's no opposition, the motion passes 4-0. Thank you all for coming back. Good evening, we're back from our second Executive Session of the evening, uh, where we discussed, uh, uh, security measures and matters of public safety. Uh, no action was taken, and now I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, if I may.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries unanimously.